At this point. I'm off.
That's wrong. So instead of a soul minute, can you have the all we need to buy? Basically, the type of acid. Sure. Well, there's some issues. So many of them.
Does it? Yeah. You know.
We must have. You know.
I'm.
I'm. I'm saying.
It's all serious.
Right.
Yeah.
In fall.
I'm curating. And I didn't have patients on. But I could figure twenty two twenty. And so. So. Walking out.
One in the act of an emergency. For. Here to go for.
How's that factor?
Oh, it's not. You got it. No, well. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Jeremy, how are you? How are you doing? First thing. Oh. It's good to see you. I'm wow. How's it going, Sal?
Wow.
Walking the dogs still.
Okay.
But, you know, we probably planned to guard me about it, but we're not going to plant the gardens. I've worked with plant the gardens. We're enjoying.
Yeah.
What are you growing? Uh, tomato squash, another year ever present squash. Um, kale. Let you know. I did. See what else? Kathy was growing, um, indigo to die. Cause she's at the time. Yeah, she's. They used to grow that in South Carolina. Yeah. Yeah. But she would try indigo, pepper, the usual. And you look on the indigo? Yeah. Yeah. This is what she wanted. She made a basket. Yeah. It was very much. So you tied up with you like.
I really wish that first.
You press it right enough in the blender. And then you were soaking it. Because we put fabric. Like the fabric came out like.
I heard. Well, that's it. I ride on it.
Yeah. And then when you expose to the air changes. Yeah, then it turns into sort of a lightish color. But if you want to get that with the indigo, you have to format it. Have to leave it at the top for like a week and some month. But I look at that. But she said, oh, that's it. There's always something shocking on the stove. Not yet. Yeah, yeah. It is really interesting. It is interesting. The chemistry of what she does is. If it's.
Oh, and you're.
Yeah.
Yes, always. Yeah. But help us.
Right. I'm tired of seeing. I love your.
So. Okay. So.
See how.
Good. And push us. Good.
But you're still going. So I have to. So we're great. I have. Right here. Yeah, I was got the hand. You sound like. They have to. They're the last. When you add the. I think they learned. Try to come down. Either you don't. So. Well, these are after. It's like.
Yes, a hundred and sixty. Not that anyone should answer that.
I used that earlier and it smashed the whole thing. Instead of the two days.
Too much. You need to get a book by there for our packets.
Okay.
All too far. And, Jesse, you still gonna do the before consent agenda? The.
Yeah, yes.
So double check.
Did you pull up? Package? I'm gonna give them a little. Food. Yeah.
Gonna go ahead and call this meeting in order next six thirty. Let's, uh, do pledge. I. Have been a nice state from America. And to the Republic for vicious hands. One nation under God. In a physical with liberty. Our. Well, everybody's here. Uh, so I have House of Matt in. House for type throw. Where am I?
You got it.
Thank you. Anyways, we we got full house minus the two seats that we need to fill, so. Do we have anybody signed up? There's. Um. It's done. If you could say my name and address for the record.
My name is Donna Boland, three O one Flower Lane in Dayton. I am the Vice Regent for the Yam Hill Chapter of the Daughter National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. The NSDAR is a nonprofit, nonpolitical women's service organization founded on October eleventh eighteen ninety to promote historical preservation, education, and patriotism. Members are direct lineal descendants of an American Revolutionary War patriot. On July fourth, twenty twenty six, our nation will commemorate and celebrate the tw- two hundred. Let me put my eyeballs on.
I know. That's my.
I'm like, wait, what's happening? Um, hey, now I can actually see. Um, okay, so on July fourth, twenty twenty six, our nation will commemorate and celebrate the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. The journey towards this historic milestone is an opportunity to pause and reflect on our nation's past, honor the contributions of all Americans, and look ahead towards the future we want to create for the next generation and beyond. NSDAR was the first society to partner with the United States Semi-Quintcentennial Commission and is actively promoting activities at the national, state, and local chapter levels. Enrolling in the DAR New Horizons Leadership Training Course, I had to choose a capstone project to qualify for graduation. I chose to plant a liberty tree in the Yam Hill Chapter's geographical area. As a Dayton resident of nearly thirty years, what better place than right here in Dayton? Meeting with City Manager Cottle and Public Work Supervisor Culler on May fifth, we discussed the location of Dayton's Liberty Tree to be in the fourth and Ferry corner of our beautiful Quirkhouse Square Park. The. Quercus. Coxenia, commonly known.
I'm laughing.
Yes.
You did that.
Quercus pasenia, commonly known as scarlet oak, is a very popular landscape choice for more than vivid color with a rounded, open habit which eventually matures to seventy feet tall. Tolerance for poor soil and wind resistance combined with its beauty to make the scarlet oak a widely used species throughout parks, in large yards, and along streets. The tree has been donated and will be professionally installed by Casey Cape Farms in late September or October with a shovel and the dirt ceremony with DAR and city dignitaries. A footstone at the base of the tree will have a brass plaque with the text that reads Revolutionary War Patriots. This marker commemorates the men and women who achieved American independence. These patriots, believing in the noble cause of liberty, fought valiantly to found a new nation seventeen seventy five to seventeen eighty three, presented by Yam Hill Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, in honor of the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the United States. Due to the length of time it takes, it may take for the NSDAR Office of the Historian General to approve the marker and production of the plaque. The commemorative ceremony will not take place until spring. Our intention is to include the elementary school children during the commemorative ceremony as well as engaging the high school, middle school band. Yam Hill Chapter NSDAR is very excited about Dayton being the recipient of the first America's two hundred fiftieth Commemorative Liberty Tree in Yam Hill County. Thank you for this opportunity, your consideration, and a council's time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. We've got nobody else. Um, before we get to the consent agenda, Jeremy wants to say a few words, um, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I just want to orient you for a moment to the monthly financials. You've never had these in your package before. It's a lot of information. I want to give you some tips on what to look out for or future months, because you want to start seeing these. This is an important internal control. And I anticipate we'll have some conversations about different ways that we could format this, some summaries that we could give you, some narratives that we could give you. We can slice and dice this in whatever way makes sense for you. But I wanted to go ahead and put these out there uh, so you can start thinking about it. So if you turn to page thirteen or excuse me, twelve, you'll see combined cash investment. So this shows our combined cash and bank account and in our investment pool. And then you'll see cash allocation reconciliations. So that shows how much of that three point one million dollars goes to each fund. Folks, since I joined the city, this has been what I've wanted to see, and we finally got it. This is a big deal. So if we look at page and you'll see at the general fund ending June thirtieth twenty five had a hundred forty six thousand. Uh, these are unaudited numbers, of course, once we conduct the audit and if there are any correcting entries, this may change. So this is for the all, the entire city funds cash allocation as of that date. If you go to page thirteen, you'll see the balance sheet for the general fund. Each fund has a balance sheet at the very beginning. At the next to last line, you'll see total fund equity. So that is, that's the general fund balance. And then if you go to page fourteen, that's where you start seeing the revenues. Revenues are presented first and then expenditures.
That's all we're happy about. The revenues.
Yes, we love our revenues. You'll, this report is formatted funky. You'll see that it summarizes by object code. So the op, the way our our accounting codes work is the first three are the fund, one hundred means general fund. Then the next three are the cost center. Then after that, we have object. And then after that, we have subobject. And you'll see that it's summarizing by object. Jamie is working on the formatting for this and it's probably going to take us some time. But this is not how it should look. It should be summarized in a way that that puts like intergovernmental together, that puts franchise fees together, so that in in a way that's categorized logically. Exactly. Exactly. There's a lot of them. So, so the idea is you'll have a category for, let's say, intergovernmental revenues, and that'll provide, it'll provide the summary for that, and then the accounts associated with that. So you can go through those categories and get a quick, quick idea. If you go to page seventeen, that shows a total revenue. It shows at a year-to-date actual compared to budget. You'll see for the general fund as of June thirty twenty five, we achieved eighty-five percent of our revenue target. With me so far? All right. If you flip to page eighteen, that's where the expenditures start. And at the top, it starts with the administration part. You'll see where it says administration. So going back to the funds, the the account structure, we have one hundred, that means general fund, one hundred, that means administration, five two six means city manager.
I had to go through and highlight all that. Every little breakup like that because I was like. I'm hate.
Yep. And again, we can, we can restructure this. So let's go to page page twenty two in the middle. You'll see it says total administration. The adminis, do you see that line? Total administration. So that sums all the expenditures accounts for administration. And you'll see administration for that fiscal year, for those twelve months, spent ninety one point seven percent of this budget. So you can go through all the city funds and and go through the same exercise. And then, so that was for June. We also have July thirty one twenty five in here, and that starts. That starts on page one hundred thirteen. That's a quick orientation to these monthly financials. Again, we'll be having some conversations about how to summarize this data and present it to you in a way that makes sense. But I do want to ensure that moving forward, you have eyes on our financial condition on a monthly basis.
Yes, sir. So will this then affect our current fiscal year budget? Will there be recommendations coming down to adjust anything? Because I I I'm curious in that, is if this data is influencing our current fiscal year budget that we're operating on, uh, but it wasn't presentable at that point in time, correct? So if I'm looking at like object seven ninety nine on page twenty seven as a random example, right? So that was eight hundred thirty one percent is what we spent versus what.
What page?
Uh, page twenty seven.
Page.
Um, so it's just a miscellaneous expense. It's under code one zero zero point one zero three point seven nine nine. Um, so it's just miscellaneous expense. It looks like miscellaneous expense under the subject code was budgeted as five hundred. We spent four thousand, so eight hundred thirty one percent, you know, over. Um, and then like just another very, very random example. Um, if I look at, uh, where was it? It was on, but point being, when we look at the codes that are far and above what was budgeted, will there need to be edits that come down the line for the current fiscal year budget to accommodate, you know, what we think our real world expenditures are versus historic expenditures? Or?
Possibly, possibly. So to go back to your example, um, if you look again on page sixteen, the total parks to budget, uh, budget was ninety six point seven percent. So we don't appropriate to the object level of detail. So certain accounts can be over, but as long as that total apartment is within budget, we're good.
Okay. Excellent.
But that that brings up a good point is this provides the detail that we need to adjust budgets uh, based on how things change.
Cool. Thank you.
And it can help us identify trends, too.
Yeah. Was there, you know, because there's obviously over a hundred pages of this. Was, were there certain, uh, departments or categorizations that were vastly over where we expected them to be that are in the red flag?
So the state revenue sharing fund was a big one. We spent a lot of money out of that fund. A lot of it had to do with uh, the city manager recruitment process. I believe a lot of that was paid out with state revenue sharing fund, and we did the retreat as well. Did a lot of trainings. But the council approved a supplemental budget in June that brought the bu- budget in line with expenditures, so that we didn't exceed uh, budgets.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Um, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have a motion.
That's true. Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, including special session from June twenty third, regular session from July twenty first, regular session from August fourth of this year, and the financial statements from June and July of this year.
Second. Cap motion from Council Matt in the second, the Council Peterson. Uh, all those in favor? All right. And I was mentioning classes. All right, we'll go on to our action items. Um, City Council vacancy appointments, page two nine of your packets.
And Mayor, I believe we had to change if we may.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to address that?
Yes. Um, so we did have an applicant who initially noted they were not eligible to vote in Oregon. I contacted them and they stated that they were. That was just a mistake. They compared with county clerk's office that they are eligible. So I left their their application on their desk on the side, so.
Okay. Considered. Excellent. All right. Um, it looks like we have two of our applicants here. We have. I was gonna find counselor because she used to be here. That, uh, why don't we have, um, each of you come on up, um, separately and introduce yourselves, and then we might have a couple of questions for you. Um, who wants to go first?
Well, I'm ready. I'll go for it. All right.
Uh, my name is Colt Wilkins. I've been living here since twenty eighteen. My family owns the bar right here. And, uh, I would like to be able to be a part of this city council and help with the problems.
What do you think our top issues are, our top two issues in that?
Well, probably the water.
Thank you.
Will be a big one.
For sure.
And then how we're going to deal with all this expansion that we're getting from the strollers building all this over here, which is a great thing, but it's gonna be a hectic thing to deal with.
For sure. Um, and just for the record, could you state your address so that?
Uh, four O two Ferry Street.
Thanks. All right. Does any of the counselors have any questions or comments or anything you'd like to ask? Yes, sir. Uh, tell me about you mentioned that you were on the events committee. Tell me about your experience.
It was actually really good. I was with Chris on that, and it was a great thing. It was really fun. I loved it. I loved getting, you know, involved and helping, you know, set up those events. They were really cool.
Did you take, did you kind of lead up anything in that, or you were kind of just a worker bee?
Um, kind of a worker bee, but I had some parts and like, you know, we were starting to get bands going. We were starting to figure out what bands we wanted. We never got to get to them, but I was able to get quite a bit of bands out there that we could have gotten to, so.
All right. But, yeah. All right. Thank you, Colt. I would chase that. And then you just state your address.
Stop over five one five southeast Palmer Lane in Dayton, Oregon.
What? And? Uh, who wants to go first and ask a question?
You gonna give us the elevator speech first? Sure. Yeah. I was actually gonna sell my house. I I used to be a member of the council, as most of you know, and decided not to run during this election and voted for Robin Hatcher. Shouldn't say that, but anyways. Because we were moving, but our house didn't sell and it's coming off the market, and I saw that we had a couple of vacancies. And I actually enjoyed serving on the council when I did. I feel like, you know, it's I, I was talking to a friend and 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 being on the council is more of a, it's a responsibility and it's kind of a nuisance. Sometimes you think, oh, once a month, I'd seem like that much, but there's more responsibility than just that, and you have to be thoughtful in how you report yourself in the community as well as how you report yourself in the council. And it was, it was more of an experience than I expected when I went in, you know, and and I really found it rewarding, almost like a calling, as I told this friend that I was talking to at lunch one day. And so, you know, I kicked it around pretty hard, and I got some interesting input from my wife. But in the end, decided to my own self be true, you know, and and I really had some second thoughts. I actually drew my, my application at one point in time and then reconsidered and decided to go ahead and throw my hat in the ring, if you will. So, yeah, most of you guys know me. I'm a known entity. I haven't changed much at being a good bridge builder, peacemaker, and wanted to see this town grow, you know, and dealing with our boundaries and our water issues, paying for, you know, utilities, sewer system, all the runs and all the rest of the things that have been going on around here. You know, I'd like to get Palmer Lane paid one day, so I thought, hey, I get on the council. But that's not why I'm here. Anyway, that's pretty much the speech. Yeah.
All right.
Any question?
I appreciate your, um, volunteer work, uh, at hospice and at practice. Travis, I mean, uh, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. Yeah, I was a hospice nurse for a long time.
Yeah.
And so it's strange when you spend enough time nursing in hospice, and I was a case manager, and I also managed forty nurses at one point in time for a large hospice agency. And when you do that, it gets in your blood, and so I always knew that I would volunteer when I quit and I and I retired, I guess in May of twenty three? Anyways, I volunteered about a year and a half ago. And so, I mean, I quit about a year and a half ago, and so I've been volunteering ever since, and I really enjoy, I found that I really enjoy, um, being the fly on the wall. The people really don't pay attention to volunteers much in hospice. So it's always fun to listen to the gossip and what patients have to say without having to respond in any manner. As far as the monks are concerned, I actually took care of the monks for a long time, both in hospice and home health, and connected with a lot of that group. Unfortunately, I've seen a lot of them pass away. So we become, my wife and I both are core volunteers for the games. We give them rides and, you know, do go in and do wound care sometimes for some of them when they're sick and, you know, that kind of thing. So I just enjoy the peace up there. Everything else. Yeah.
Excellent. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Mr. Duster.
Yeah. I see you guys, too.
All right. There's a couple other, uh, applicants, uh, David Soulseens, that how you say him, I think. I, he was unable to make it because of an emergency and followed documents. So. All right, if you have any more questions or some discussion, um, I'll entertain a motion whenever you're ready.
Kick off the discussion. Um, to me, this is, you know, any given time that there's an interview process, right? The first step is showing your, the meter. It's literally the first step, showing up there. And so where I'm sitting, it's like we've got two open seats, got four applicants, got two applicants that showed up to the interview. And so it's, it's pretty clear cut in my mind. But that's the, that's the, the discussion that I want to break to David.
I, um, sort of disagree. I think if, uh, you had a, a health issue or an illness, you could make sketches right up here. Dream.
Oh, a fully dream bad. Yeah.
So since he's not able, nothing says you have to make a determination tonight if we want to wait until we can follow up with the other two applicants. We can do that as well. That way you have a full range of ideas and so that is up to you.
I might be up for that.
I would be happy to, um, suggest that. That it would be good for us to talk to all four just to make sure we know what we're getting. Um. But it, you know, it seems we have two others interested. Um, there were extenuating circumstances. So unless it's critical to do it tonight, I think suggests we give them another chance and make the decision next time.
The only way it's critical is if, for some reason, we don't have four, so you all must come to the meetings. It's all.
That's okay.
Okay, well, so is, do I need to make a? Probably make official motion to.
I move that we table this till next time and invite the other two to come in, or all four.
All four, absolutely, I think would be a good idea. Okay, the motion from Council Matten to table the determination of our two seats until next meeting when we can have all four applicants here. And a second from Council Peterson, all those in favor? Aye, aye, and you oppose? Motion passes. You're abstaining, okay. Okay, we got one abstainer. All right, we're gonna move on to presentation from GSI Water Solutions.
Are we free to go?
Oh, you're free to go, yeah, sorry guys.
I'll be back in a spot again.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks you guys, nice to see everybody.
Thank you.
You too.
Oh, great. Oh, we got power, yeah, we have the power report.
Well, Mayor and councilors, thank you very much for having me here today. I'll be looking over to the right side and memorize my presentation, but, but my name is Tim Hankwood, GSI Water Solutions. We have been working with the city of Dayton since nineteen ninety nine. Dayton was our, was a seventh customer or client of GSI Water Solutions, so we've been with you for a very, very long time. So thank you very much for the longevity, appreciate it. I'm here today to talk to you about the water loss analysis that we conducted for, for the city. Perfect, our agenda tonight, let's talk about what our goals are for the presentation. I want to talk to you about the purpose and methodology of our water loss analysis. And then just make sure we're on the same page regarding water loss to, to go to have a water loss one oh one course. Just take a few minutes to talk about what water loss is. And then to get into the heart of the summary of our findings, what's up in the history of water loss for the city? We did an assessment of data validity, the data that went into the water loss calculation, so I'll talk about that a little bit. And then also likely loss locations and potential causes. Finally, we'll talk about selected remedies and next steps. So our goals tonight, threefold, one, just to describe the reasons for water loss, for the water loss analysis, give you insight into the city's historic water losses, and then also to describe the future water loss obligations that the city has. Okay, so why the water loss analysis? It was a requirement by the Oregon Water Resources Department upon the city and many cities. And the requirement is to analyze potential factors for the loss, identify remedies, and then inform Oregon Water Resource Department what those remedies are and the findings from the analysis. So GSI labbed that effort for the city, is leading that effort for the city. If by twenty twenty eight, losses still exceed ten percent, then a community will need to either do one of three things, implement a leak detection and a repair program, or a line replacement program, or a water loss control program that's commensurate with A W W A Water Works Association standards. Why else for the project? Well, it helps identify ways to reduce your costs, every gallon of water that you produce is a cost for the city. It helps maintain the city's good stewardship of its water resources. And then finally, it identifies ways to stretch the city's supplies. And I know that water is a big issue for you right now, water loss is a very important topic. So how did we do the water loss analysis? We conducted some water audits and we audited from twenty twenty two through June twenty twenty five. We facilitated three meetings with city staff. And during those meetings, we evaluated the audit results, assessed the validity of the data used in the audits, and then identified potential causes of, potential causes of losses and remedies. Okay, water loss one oh. So as I mentioned, we performed the water audit. And a water audit is basically a water balance, it's a full accounting of the uses of water in your system, and it quantifies system losses. So the calculation is pretty simple, it's water produced minus water consumed, whatever's left over is your water loss. And we measure water loss as a million gallons, so a volume, and also percent of total water produced. So we'll, we'll be talking about both of those numbers. The industry gold standard, the water industry gold standard is ten percent or less, and that's also what American Water Work, excuse me, Oregon Water Resources Department wants you to get achieved as well. And water loss comprised of two components, it's an apparent loss and a real loss. Apparent losses are the things you can't see, it's, it's, it's a meter, meter inaccuracies. Let's pretend one of your customer meters is off by five percent. The difference between the actual water used through that meter and what the meter reads, that five percent, is considered loss. And then real losses are things you can't see, the guys are coming up out of the, out of the middle, out of, out of the middle of the street, for example, or any other kinds of losses. And then this goes kind of without saying, but I'll say it anyway because we talked about it a little bit later in my presentations, that we need valid data and, or valid the data is, the more confident confidence we'll have in those results. This is too small to see, but I'm using it here kind of to illustrate how we divided before the water loss audits. So this portion of the system is the watershed system, as you know, and it's comprised of the springs and also the two McDougal wells. We also, that's, so that's one component of the system that we can calculate water loss for. The other component was the in-town or your distribution system. And water, of course, comes into your distribution system, as you know, from the watershed, but also the Dayton Lafayette wellfields, which is treated through your water treatment plants. And then if they were operable through Flower, Eleventh Street, and I'm forgetting the last wells. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the city's efforts to reduce losses historically. Portions of the watershed line, well, the watershed line was constructed in nineteen thirty two. About a third of that has been replaced, and most recently back in twenty thirteen. The city's performed periodic leak detection surveys, so company will go out and do some acoustic testing on your, in your distribution system to find out if there are any leaks. That's been done regularly periodically, and usually very few leaks are found, and any leaks that are found are pretty small. So, which means your system, in the distribution system, is pretty tight. When leaks are found, those are fixed and have been historically fixed. Back in twenty eighteen, you probably know that your service meters, the meters that your customers have at their, at the interconnections with your distribution system were replaced, that's great news, that really helps reduce potential losses. Again, that's an apparent type of loss, it's not real, it's not a loss that you can see, but it is potentially a loss when those meters get out of tune or inaccurate, usually those have a lifespan of twenty years, you're well within that twenty years lifespan. So good job on that. And then the city doesn't, does get alerts to billing system and when those regarding a potential failure of the meter, and when that meter is identified as potential failure, the city reacts and responds to that and fixes the meter or does some repairs and some, or replaces. Okay, what are our findings from the water loss analysis? Total system losses, we, this is a chart from twenty twenty through twenty twenty five, June twenty twenty five. Losses, total system, then in the last column, you see thirty, as high as fifty two percent and as low as nineteen point one percent. We know what the twenty twenty three and twenty four losses were, that geyser of a leak that, that, that you guys found, which explains in twenty twenty four why losses were so dang high. Once that leak was found and repaired in June, excuse me, January, we wanted to determine what losses were after that, which is why in twenty twenty five, we only had February through June. But look, we've got your lowest water loss calculated in the last five years.
It's probably been leaking this whole time.
I think you're probably right, yep, yep.
Because.
They, yeah.
That's quite a difference.
And they don't just happen overnight, it's a very slow leak and eventually they do get bigger and bigger. So the different segments, sorry we can't see, but the, these are the title here, but these are the two segments that I talked about. In-town, your losses started sixteen percent, went down to below ten percent, and then bumped up, of course, twenty five and forty six percent of your water was entered your distribution system, of course, this is due to leaks. Let's take a look at the watershed losses, losses were pretty consistent, high twenties, low thirties over time, and of course, that is gonna show your leaks, rather the leak. Okay, and as I mentioned, we did an assessment of the validity of data that went into this recalculation. It's important to know if you're confident about that data, because some important decisions are made by you and by Oregon Water Resource Department in terms of what they were gonna require you to do if your water, then where your water losses fall. So out of a hundred points, so we used American Water Works Association's tool to assess the validity of your data. And out of a hundred points, we, the city got a score of forty five, which is about middle, middle of the road. It's about as reliable as half of the other cities that American Water Association's model compares against. Of course, there are always ways to improve the validity of that score and we recommend that's the case and those are some of our remedies we'll talk about in a few minutes. Okay, so here's the findings summarized from our analysis. In the watershed, two thirds of the transmission lines are from nineteen thirty two, and that's probably a large source of real losses for you up there. In-town, however, losses are probably below ten percent, and let me just jump back to a previous slide. I do want to point out here what happened, what's going on twenty one and twenty two. We think that this is exactly what's going on now, right? Once we get a full year's worth of data, we'll find, I think, that in-town losses are probably below ten percent, which suggests that most of your losses are occurring, are occurring in the watershed. Let's look at how much. If that's true, if, if water losses were eight percent and five point five percent, and that's what we're experiencing today in town, those losses were seven million gallons and four point three million gallons a year. Whereas if we look at the total losses consistently in the watershed, we're in about twenty million gallons. So that just kind of gives you a size comparison of what we think the difference is between the two. In-town, again, probably below ten percent, that we'll need to have many more months of data before we definitively determine that. And losses are likely due to typical things, apparent losses like minor differences in meter accuracies, as I mentioned. And then real losses, you're always gonna have leaks in a system, but again, your system's pretty tight in the distribution system, which is wonderful. And then there are some improvements to be made in terms of data validity. Okay, so we, with city staff, we identified all of this information, we analyzed it, came up with some, provided a list of remedies for the city to consider, and city staff went down to six remedies. And here are the first three, the first one is to reduce real losses associated with the watershed. So first thing we recommend before making any moves towards seeking funding for line replacement is to confirm that indeed there is water loss going out there, we just did a desktop, a tabletop analysis, right? So it makes sense to get some eyes on that and make sure that there indeed are some water losses going on there, which we're pretty sure there are. So we recommend doing that sooner than later, twenty twenty six. And then replacing lines in the watershed if leaks are identified, that of course will need to happen pending. Our second, second remedy here is to test meters of your largest users at least every three years and repair those as needed. That's a way to reduce your apparent losses, improve your data validity, but also, of course, make sure that you're getting the revenue for water that's actually used. Third, review the billing process where errors may be introduced and revised processes needed. Not to say that there are errors occurring in the billing process right now, but it's worthwhile to do an evaluation in terms of whether or not there are places where errors can be introduced and to, to modify the, the processes needed. The last three, the first one on the top there, evaluate need for new billing process controls. These are simply determining whether or not there's need to add some double checks to that process. And that'll get an increased, appropriate apparent losses. The fifth one is test mechanical master meters, at least every three years to maintain as needs, what do I mean, what do we mean by that? That means your master meters are those that measure water coming into your system. They're your wells, they're the water treatment plant, they're the springs. These are really critical to make sure if these are off, then your water losses are gonna be off. So it's critical to maintain these in fact, in a manner that makes sure that they're accurate. We specify here mechanical because your electronic meters can't be tested in place, they have to be pulled out and sent and it's a couple of months, a month or two before the results get back. We're not suggesting you do that because you need that meter in place. But for the mechanical meters, for example, those at McDougal Wells, those ones you will want to try to test periodically and maintain those. And then finally, any water that's used, that's authorized, used as authorized, for example, by the fire department or through flushing operations to maintain water quality, we don't capture those, those are considered loss. So the fifth, the sixth and final remedy would be to capture those over time, I know Jeremy's in the process of working on, to add them to your loss calculation so they're not considered loss. Side note, they're usually not massive, they'll change your water loss maybe a half percent. So we're not talking a lot of benefit there, but it's still a good practice to maintain. Okay, only one more slide after this and some thank you slides, so happy to answer your questions after that. So what are the next steps? Again, as I mentioned, this analysis was required by Oregon Water Resource Departments, we'll need to inform them of the process and results. There's a memo, I think, in the packet in draft form, so that is what we intend to send pending any modifications on the city. Then it's up to the city to begin implementing those remedies. As I mentioned, if the remedies don't solve the issue, then there are three prescriptive requirements the city must choose from to implement by twenty, in twenty twenty eight. And then report progress in attaining that ten percent of water loss or less odiability in twenty twenty eight. And that's actually part of your progress report associated with your water management, water management and conservation. So with that, thank you very much for your attention, happy to entertain any questions or answering anything about the project and project.
About these water meters we just got in eighteen, there's been a suggestion that some of them might not be accurate. Do you have any kind of a number that says, well, at seven years old, you shouldn't, they should still be this accurate? Is there a record of them losing accuracy as they go?
Yeah, that's a great question. Typically, what, what American Water Works Association has found, and they're the, you know, the industry for us, is that right around twenty years of age is when they start to fail. There's not a lot of trail off, it's not like, the curve is not like this, it's like boom, typically. Yeah, they do fail within a, you know, a year or plus, and they can. So it's something, sometimes we recommend that clients will do, if they're feeling like there's a too high of a failure rate, they can perform a, you know, do some testing of a small population of meters to see how they feel.
We have that on our agenda or for future? Can you put an eye on that?
Public Works and I can certainly discuss that.
I think it would be good. Everything we can do to keep an eye on this would be appropriate, whatever we have designed to do anyway.
Yeah, I would say maybe a measure is if Public Works is finding that there's quite a few failures happening, right? You're gonna have failures, there'll be a small, small, small percentage, that's not uncommon, but if they start to creep up.
And we have notices, you get some sort of an alert that says, hey, wait a minute, this meter isn't working.
When we read meters on the twentieth of every month, when we submit the report to.
When we submit the report to Ricky, then she gets high consumption. Or if there's extremely low consumptions, and that's all flagged, and then we get a work order to go out, investigate. Go out and do an eye ready on it, pull the data for the last twelve months.
Do you still manually read the meters or is it a?
It's radio read, we drive around with a pickup and an antenna on the truck, so.
Yeah, well, I remember when we had little cards on rings and. Well, that was fun, but, yeah, okay, so we have a pretty good handle on everything we can.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, that's good to know.
If there's a, if there's an anomaly, Ricky gets, it pops up in her report that she generates, so.
Yeah.
We're aware of it pretty quickly.
Excellent, all right, good to know.
I don't know if this is for you or if you, but what, just another, a comment is we've been talking about possibly changing our billing. To reflect usage, so billing on. On the amount of water that, because right now it's flat, right?
The sewer radius is flat.
That's true, all right. So this meter would be something different, right? We're talking about a water meter. I mean, it seems like we need to have meters functioning before we can make any changes and have any of that. All the meters are for the water?
Yeah.
Everybody has a functioning water meter already, they were replaced, just.
Those, the the water that goes through there is used as a base for the sewer, is that right?
That's what it is, I mean, it's connected.
Yes, what was the benchmark threshold, begin the percentage of loss?
Ten, ten percent is kind of the gold standard, ten percent or less.
Okay, cool, so we gotta work this out.
In the, yes, if we're looking at the watershed or the whole system, the system's a whole.
Okay, cool.
In town, we're both.
Yeah, now, yeah, because what, forty-five percent last year is over, roughly?
In the watershed or overall, I think in the high twenties, in the high twenties, twenty-eighty.
All right.
It's very good, very good information. All right, any more questions?
Sorry, I have one more question. Sorry, so this was, this was a report, you know, an audit of the water system itself. At what time, do we have it on the docket to discuss potentials? I mean, this is all funding dependent, right? But do we have a strategy or is that like the next step is for them to develop a strategy and then for us to figure out how to fund it? To identify, you know, how to reduce our percent water loss, or is this kind of the end of it?
So that, the the biggest funding piece here is going to be the watershed line replacement. All the other stuff we can do in-house with our operational budget or existing staff. So the strategy for the watershed budget will be for Public Works Engineering and I. To have what's called a one-stop meeting with Business Oregon, they'll pull all the funding agencies together. We can look at not only that, but our sewer system, we can get all of our meetings on the table, and they'll, they'll crunch the numbers and tell us how we can make it happen.
Love that, cool. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I I did have one question. Tim, you may have covered this, forgive me, and I'm asking you to repeat yourself. When we complete these things, like the new billing processes, I don't know, that's relatively easy. Do we need to tell somebody that we did it?
You will, in twenty twenty-eight, so you have your water management conservation plans due every ten years, which we just updated for you a couple of years ago. In twenty twenty-eight, a progress report is due, and so that's kind of midway between the ten-year updates of WMCP. That's the point where you'll, you'll be checking the boxes and making sure that Ricky knows that you're, that you're satisfied with these ready.
Gotcha.
All right, we're going to move on to action item three, discussion about the solicitation policy. And I guess Dave, this.
Yeah, so Councilor Hillibrant had brought up a concern, the escalation in solicitation activity within the city. And so with Jeremy's direction, I went ahead and did a summation. Of surrounding city policies and how they authorize the ability to solicit within the community. So there's fifteen different cities that we did a spreadsheet on. That identifies both in Yamhill and Pope County, the different types of ways that different cities, similar in size to us, some larger. Go ahead and deal with this. The bottom line is that there's a lot of different ways. And in particular, when you get to the discussion item. There are license and permit fees that a number of people or cities implement. There are fees associated with, you know, the license permit structure, there's solicitation start stop times that are different. Some, in the, in a lot of them, they're like the nine to nine rule or nine to eight in standard time, but. Some of them have amended that as well and shortened the time period.
Nobody better come to my door at nine o'clock at night unless it's a major.
I know that I have brought the council ban to you, and I get nervous when I bring it up. The other thing that they talk about is no soliciting signage, in other words, if you have that in place, that absolutely means you're not allowed. Solicited that particular resident, and it seems to me like, I don't know if you caught the article in the News Register, but Lafayette is also looking at this. Exact same thing, because they're seeing it, I don't know how it works, maybe in the solicitation, solicitation world, they. They look at cities and go, okay, we're going to do this quad right now and.
Well, here's the question though about that, I mean, even if you have these policies in place. How are these business people going to really know, and are they really going to even take the time to find out?
Well, I think that in some cases, that when you you look at it, I think the more professional ones at least. Make the inquiry, because if they don't, they get a lot of trouble and it may be reported, but I think you're right. Yeah, the the fly-by-night ones, I think, are are ones where. The only way you would get around, you know, it was recording it to authorities or whatever that may be. To, you know, non-emergency line, that kind of thing, somehow getting back to us so that we know. And perhaps code enforcement could go out and make an inquiry, because usually when they're walking door to door, you know, they're around for a while. My thought was, just for consideration, is that I, if if you're willing or interested, I could put together. Maybe three different scenarios that are based on some of these other cities like Carlton and Sheridan and so forth. A kind, Carlton is probably the most restrictive, Sheridan's probably in the middle of the road, and then there are some that just don't have any policies. So if you'd like to consider that, I would be happy to draft that for you so you could discuss it. And then come to your own conclusions as to how strict or non-strict you want to make it.
Nice question.
Yep.
So when you say permit versus license, can you elaborate upon the difference?
Well, for instance, right here, we have a business license structure, okay, so we charge twenty-five dollars. For anyone to do business in town, that could be Comcast, Ziffly, all these people, okay, not a lot of money, right? But at least gives us the information that they're operating in the city. And that, you know, we we can keep tabs on who they are, what they charge, those kinds of things. So you could do that similar kind of system, some don't have business licensing. So they do a permit structure in its place and charge accordingly that way as well. So it's kind of neither are, we do have a business license in place, so we can utilize that as a way of doing business in the city.
Follow-up to that question, so is our current business license in perpetuity or does it need renewals?
Needs renewals.
Yearly? Yes, excellent, cool. And then, point verification, I think that the data information has pieces that might actually be incorrect on this.
Okay.
So we, from what I saw, we have a sign size requirement of six inches by eight inches.
Okay.
Which is quite large.
Okay.
And so the vast majority of the no soliciting signs that are in front of doorbells and things like that don't actually fit our size requirement.
Okay.
Can enforce.
Okay.
That, that size, so.
That's something that should be addressed, yeah, yeah, for sure.
That will be addressed. And then. May I put forward an opinion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I, personal opinion, I would like to see us more aligned with something like Carlton, that's on the more strict side of this. That being said, Carlton says license suspended. I also like what Amity says where it's license revoked and trespass charges.
Right.
Because I think that what that does, if if I'm a business and I'm looking at this and saying, oh, all they're going to do is pull my license, all right, whatever.
I'll never come back.
Then I'll never come back, but if they see trespass charges, then I think they take it more seriously. And so I'd like to see that personally. I like the nine to five timeframe in line with the mayor, I don't want anybody knocking on my door at eight P M or nine P M, or quite frankly, anywhere after five P M.
After five P M.
So the personal opinion, I do like the exemptions from Amity. Just as a, as a piece, I know that was localized last time, the, you know, religious exemptions, political exemption, things like that. I I think that there's, there's information giving that is important in some of that. And so personally, I would like to see that. And then for fee amount, I like the hundred dollar fee, honestly, Dallas is a hundred and sixty, it's quite nice too, for a year. So, you know, somewhere in that, you know, triple-digit mark is what I'm looking at personally. But that is the extent of my personal opinions in this.
Anybody else ask about this? Couple of questions, but to talk to that. How many different companies actually solicit here in Dayton? Is it a lot? I think a handful. Okay, because I'm worried about adding extra work on the staff if all kinds of people are coming in. If we're, if it's only a few, that's not going to be a problem so much. Enforcement, I think that's the key, if we're going to set this up, we kind of, we, we need a way to enforce it. Well, I mean, the the teeth that Drew suggests are good teeth.
Yeah.
Enforcing. Because I love the trespassing, if you said don't go. Yeah, that would get to them.
Yeah, I have a quick question, so is, if I read this script, is there a cost? For like with our attorneys to draft anything that we need to take into consideration as well?
Two thousand dollars.
Does that, would if we did the sign direction, would that?
The sign direction is a little easier probably, because that's the plan, isn't it? The sign, the size of the sign, the no solicitation sign is too big. If we change the dimensions in our policy, that's probably the quickest, less expensive way to address.
Yeah.
Initially.
Initially.
And then at some point, when we fully have a little more dollars in the budget, maybe we can have the attorney. Drop something.
Question to the city manager, if we can afford this right now?
Can we afford it?
Yeah, I've got one, two K to get this ball rolling.
Well. Let me, let me back up.
Yeah.
I want to address Councilor Typro's question. So we're talking about the the sign size, so is that?
The, the no solicitation sign.
Is that in the development code or the?
It's in what, I probably decide codes.
It's in the development. If we're talking the development code, and that's going to require. You gotta do D L C D notice, because we're updating the development code, we gotta get curtain wall, that's going to be.
It was in whatever you put in the packet last time we talked about this, it was in that packet, so whatever it was.
That that would actually likely not be the quick problem pop, if we're talking about development.
If it's a development code, but if it's just signage policy, that's planned.
As long as it's not in the bill.
Rosio's looking for us.
If it's in our just overall business regulations, that's good.
I, I, I agree with Drew. Kind of head circled a lot of the same things that we did. And we can maybe discuss absolute details, but I would like to give you a ring of this, I mean, I can. I know that some places don't have any, but it seems like a lot of places around us do.
I mean, I don't, I think it would be nice for maybe. Dave to go ahead and bring us back some wording.
Yeah.
And for us to sort of work with it a little bit, and then we'll have more time to discuss costs and options.
Cool.
It's not in the development codes, it's actually in chapter five, which.
As a question as well, just to make sure, can we double check that the rest of this information on the Dayton line is accurate? Okay, cool, let's make a change.
So it's in the abatement.
Is that a policy change that we can do?
There is a policy change that we can do.
Which is a pretty good.
With the city attorney, and that's where the. Budget of the one to two thousand, they would be drafting in ordinance, and they would be also drafting lead line. Edits to the code or qualification.
So Madam Mayor, Councilor Hillibrant's question. I'm looking, actually, off page.
While you look, Jeremy, I have a quick follow-up question just on that one. So just to make sure I'm understanding this right, so we say, okay, Dave. Fill out the proposals, we would look at the proposal at the next regular session. And then at that time, we could make a decision on if we want to pursue, if we don't want to pursue. And then that gets that ball rolling on that time.
Yeah, then you'd have to go back to your committee.
Yeah.
As opposed to spending the money upfront, and then. Once that's done, then you would get to consider.
Cool, love it.
So it's, yeah, it's a couple of stages.
Okay, yeah.
I think we want to be over budget on legal services anyway, this fiscal year, we've got a lot, a lot of things are happening.
Yeah.
So. One or two thousand dollars is if you want to break the bank, if you want a little mindful. You know, what what we're adding.
Don't be saying anything weird on Facebook.
Yeah, seriously. Thank you, Jeremy, appreciate it.
All right, cool, Dave. Okay, we're going to move on to action item four, which is the view of water production data. And Dawn is talking about that, yeah. That's what I felt like when I looked at the number first person, that's why I was like. Break it down for us.
A lot of data. This is essentially every reportable number and some non-reportable numbers that we track. We combine all of our daily rounds and basically pull. Majority of that data, put it all onto this report. Basically just trying to see some trends, try and track them a little bit quicker. That was essentially driving force behind this new report, because this is. This is what, four, four months old, maybe?
Yeah.
Four months, three months. So it's, we're still. Working through it, but like I said, there's a lot of data on here that's, it tracks your wells. Tracks gallons per minute while it's running, tracks the run feed above the screen while it's running. So we're able to see, you know. Like on the very first page, we're looking at while it's running, you're seeing fifty-five gallons a minute out of well one. Then you see it drop towards the bottom of the page.
Down to fifty.
Yeah, on the fifteenth, we have to drop it five gallons a minute to keep the well operating. Because otherwise, if we don't lower it down, it will actually continue to drop down until it will actually go into automatic, automatic shutdown. Will shut itself off, so it doesn't damage everything. But you can see where you start the. On six, nine, you're fifty-five gallons a minute, you're running at thirty-four feet above the screen, down here. On the fifteenth of July, when we dropped it to fifteen, we were only running nineteen feet above the screen, so. Basically just. Trying to be more aware of what's going on in the moment daily. Because these numbers are captured daily, they're put into this report. Cause these numbers are captured daily, they're put into this report. Over the weekend. Occasionally we'll hold off until Monday because it does take some added time for the guys that are in here on Saturday and Sunday doing rounds. But by Monday morning, this report's updated, so we are aware of everything that's going on. Over the weekend and during each day. But. Yeah, primarily, it's just a new report that we're trying to be aware of what's going on and track things a little bit. Better than we have in the past.
Good question, Doc.
But.
So I see on this first page where it has all the different. You know, Google one, the Google two goals, all that, um, but then if you go over to the next page where it says daily total system production. Those numbers will be on four days, off three days, on four days, off three days, which doesn't seem to line up with the production of the wells themselves. So can you explain? Why? It shows that the wells will be producing on one page on specific days, but then it'll show zero production. For the entire system on certain days on the next page? Or am I just reading this wrong? Cause the demand will run every day. So it, it'll, the, it says daily total system demand every day, but.
Yeah.
For whatever reason.
I think part of that is so like on the weekends, when we aren't. Monday through Thursday, we track the springs, we track everything, but on the weekends, we don't track the springs.
Gotcha.
We get the, we track the.
Just.
The P R V number, so that's where you get your, some of these numbers, but that's, I think that's what the. The disconnect is there, I think is over the weekend when we're not tracking the springs.
Then there's.
Yeah.
Tracked on those days. Okay.
Yeah.
So then.
And we are trying to go through. One of the pages. Yeah, the very last page. Anywhere where there is something that wasn't metered to track, they're trying to go in and add that so that it's. Not just shown as, why is there no data here?
Gotcha.
So like I said, we're still.
Yeah.
We're still fine tuning this, we're still working through this, I mean.
For sure, yes.
Most of us that say not measured almost correspond to the same.
Yeah, yeah, we can see that. Okay, cool. And this is my question, Dave, too.
Yeah.
A slightly odd subject here. The Red Skull County Secretary was the last page of that book. It is, is there a connection?
That's my sister-in-law.
Oh, all right.
Yep.
Um, I'm hoping you are recommending her. Good to know. All right.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, note. Uh, why? We included this in the packet, I mentioned this, Don, Don and I mentioned this at the last meeting, when we were tracking these data, keep an eye on it. I just wanna be fully transparent, if you, let you know that. How triangular we are.
Mm-hmm.
And this is in a spreadsheet, it is very easy in a spreadsheet to just select the data, insert chart. And kind of move, move the, the lines so that it selects new data, automatically updates the chart. Uh, so that I can see the trends, I can see like with the, the G P M run, I can see how. You know, the wells start with this much rest and then it gets closer and closer and closer over time.
Yeah.
Um, that's the next stage of this, we're just collecting the data now, trying to get a handle on that. So putting this into a dashboard format will be the next stage.
That's cool.
Thank you for giving us to go.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it.
We're still working on.
Oh, Ross, I'm looking at it, but I really appreciate it.
Yeah, like, like Jeremy said, once we get it more fine tuned and a little. Little more familiar with it, like Jeremy was saying, there's gonna be. Easier ways to look at all of this data, so.
First to a graph, personally.
All right, uh, so we're gonna move on to Ashna item number, which is technically five now. Uh, we are gonna have a discussion. Page two forty-three. Mister.
Oh, okay, sorry about that, um. Skip one, huh, number five?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
All right, so, uh, again, this came up, uh, as a suggestion from the council relative to. Some issues we've had, in particular in the park, uh, obviously at the bridge, places like that. Uh, one of my experiences with the McMinnville Downtown Association. And I think most of us know that McMinnville has dealt with a lot of issues when it comes to vandalism, graffiti, all these, all these various things that. Continue to go on there at times, but when you have a perpetrator that is aggressively doing things. Uh, they finally made action, uh, year, several years ago now. Uh, to create what was called an exclusion zone. So right now, if somebody does something here, um, they can be notified that they're to stay out of. An area for thirty days, which is not very long, um. In McMinnville, they've changed that to first, uh, offense. Being in the neighborhood of two hundred and forty days, second offense, three hundred and sixty days and heavier on. Um, and it stood up, so it was reviewed by their attorney and so forth. We have obviously our own set of perpetrators here. There are people we know have done things to our property. Uh, just once, but twice, or even as many as three times or more. Um, and yet, we're not able to do a lot with it, as I quote our deputy who says, you have no teeth. In your ability to deal with these people. Um, so what I did is I, I went ahead and I summarized some of what McMinnville is doing. Uh, again, I kind of mentioned it to you, the exclusion way that doing it. Again, we run into enforcement as we always do, right? But we have a lot of eyes during the day on people down here. Public works is out and about. Jeremy walks, I get out in the park, we see things going on. So in other words, we know who is, those people are. And if they're in those areas that they've been excluded from, it's not hard for us to call the non-emergency line and get something done about it. Um, and again, continue to violate a trespass. Yeah, that then requires jail time. So, um, again, this was one, something I was suggesting that maybe we follow up on. Uh, see if we can put something together in language. Uh, if you agree with it, we can have it reviewed by the attorney and make sure that it stands up legally. But it gives us something that we can fall back on with some of these, uh, individuals that have been. Continually doing things to us that we haven't been able to respond. So, uh, that was what brought it up. I, 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 I remember when they did this downtown in McMinnville. It was very effective because some of these people that would violate it, literally, you didn't see them for quite a while. Uh, so they, they definitely kept it. Granted, they have a police force and so forth, but we also have eyes, so, um. It's just something we can look at doing. And the only thing I would say is this was very downtown centered with McMinnville. I think that for us, we might wanna see if we could, uh, expand that zone to include the bridge area because we know that the bridge is something we've had. Quite a bit of problem with labor and, uh, in the dog park as well, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Uh, so with the exclusion zone, can it be a, a series of zones? Be, the reason I ask that.
Possible.
Uh, be, because I think like our park system, could that be an exclusionary?
Right.
You know, and so I think, you know, what, the downtown and, uh, park and in the bridge were a starting point, but I would also be curious. Uh, if we could build in a, a system.
Systems, so like, yeah.
Yeah.
Section A, section B, section C.
Yeah, it's like we may never need it for X or, you know, Y area, but it's there just in case. We know that there's issues. Well, well, and, and, no, to, to your point, like, we know that there's issues at one location right now, and if we create an exclusionary zone there, but don't do that. To another place, then, then, you know, then just move, or, you know.
Well, what's nice about that too is we, we build, um, a paper trail.
Yeah.
Of the actual.
Yeah.
Things happening, which helps us to build a case against and, and more likely a judge will go, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
As long as we don't get.
Yeah, I won't say that. So, yeah, this, my thought I would be in favor of.
Yeah, as mentioned earlier, again, this is subject to legal advice, so. I think, you know, it's something I can begin to draft up for you to look at and we can continue to massage it if needed. Make sure we answer questions like you're asking about different zones, uh, before we take it anywhere and. And fund it to, to see if it holds water, hopefully.
Yeah.
But.
Um, we'll need a motion. Yes. I move the city manager, direct staff to create and submit exclusion zone policy options for consideration by. Yeah, I've got a motion from Councilor Peterson, second from Councilor Hillbrand, all those in favor?
All right.
I, motion passes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, that reminded me, we did not make a motion on the solicitation policy.
Because we, yes, we did, we tabled it.
The solicitation policy? About Dave was gonna create three different options, so we still need to get in direction.
I thought Katie made a motion.
Uh, that was for the vacancy. Oh.
Okay, somebody make the motion. Okay, I guess I made a motion. It was so moved by. All those in favor? All right, motion passes. Okay, um, we will move on to page two forty-five. This is approval to apply for a grant and loan financing. Dear me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At your last meeting, we presented to the council an intake form. Which the council reviewed and approved, we submitted that intake, intake form, we received the formal invitation with ties for funding. For the permitting and water quality assistance testing for Fisher Farms. This is through Business Organs Technical System Loan and Grant Program. On another note, we did receive the one point two million dollar award for construction at Fisher Farms. Those monies cannot be used for this state's project, which is why this application is approved today. And this would result in a fifty thousand dollar grant, remainder covered with ten-year loan at one percent interest. I do wanna note that we are obtaining quotes from other firms to do this work. Uh, due to the purchasing thresholds involved, so depending on what we receive. The quotes may be less than what, what is presented here. But, uh, the quote, the numbers. In here are prepared by our hydrogeologist to crack and treat himself.
Excellent. Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I moved to authorize the city manager to submit and the mayor to sign a two hundred and six thousand dollar, five hundred and eighty-eight dollar. Technical assistance funding application to Business Organ for the Fisher Farms nursery, nursery well development feasibility study.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Hillbrand, the second from Councilor High Grove, all those in favor?
All right.
Motion passes. All right. Very funky, yeah. We're on page two fifty-seven. And we will have, uh, this session of. Uh, but the Andrews, the re opening. By my house. Let's say you. Jerry or Don.
I believe our public works supervisor had, uh, some meetings this afternoon that could shed light on this, Don, would you like to get them?
So we had a locksmith come out. So we've had multiple issues with hampering with the locks. Those door locks. We were like, okay, well, let's see what else is out there and available. It's actually a, a very quality lock that is on the building. It is. Those locks are a thousand dollars a piece that are on those doors. Uh, locksmith that came out today looked at it and said they wouldn't recommend replacing them. They can. Get their hands on a cable, so they can, we don't have, we're not licensed locksmiths, we don't have the ability to get. The equipment that we need or the information on the specific doorknob, so we have to go through locksmith.
Of course.
So Jeremy had asked us to reach out to some locksmiths, see what we could find out. The only one that got back to us came out today, looked at it, uh, not a problem. I can get a cable. I can reprogram these to whatever number you want, but I would recommend putting a. Uh, like tamper proof over the keypad to try and limit the amount of damage that they're taking. So. Uh, basically, if we move forward with that, it's about four hundred dollars for them to get the cord, come out, program the locks. And he said, at any point after that, if we have an issue, they come right back out, plug into it, clear the code. Re-enter a code or change the code and the lock's good to go.
Cool, and is that for both bathrooms or is that?
That's just for Anderson Park.
For both.
These ones, yeah, both those doors, because these ones are a different system, same bathroom company, different locking systems. These are magnetic locks. There's no keypad, there's no code. Those ones are just a keypad that automatically locks, so. But the issue is, is they have. Messed with those locks enough that they have both those locks put into, um, basically like a. Demo mode, so they lock for about ten minutes and then automatically unlock, and that's why we have. People in there all hours of the night when you were catching the lights coming.
Yeah, I'm like, why are the lights on over there?
So that's why we were like, Jeremy locked the door, everything's good.
Yeah.
So that's, we finally have an answer as to why and how, so. But yeah, that's basically for us to open that up and have function blocks, it's gonna be four hundred dollars.
And we have the funding for that.
I'm sure we can run with just four hundred dollars.
Please, for forty-five.
Otherwise, you gotta keep going back down there, coffee.
Well.
Yeah, well, now, that was the other conversation. We said, okay, well, what if we remove those and just go to a manual lock? And we figure out how we're gonna get the doors locked every night and unlocked every morning when we get here. Morning's not an issue, but. You would have to pay staff to come in just to lock the door every night.
You ever looked at the Brim Salto for locks? So check out Salto, not, I mean, well, you probably got on there far better, but, um, so Salto locks are. You, you have bots that can operate them, uh, there's a, a keypad and you can have them unlocked from the outside at any time, but they can, they can have, uh, automatic. Lock at a certain point, uh, in the night and then automatic unlock in the morning, but it's a work. Uh, and so my office, I have it set as well, easy office mode, it unlocks at nine o'clock sharp. And it re-locks at six P M sharp, and then I can have it so that at that point, it just is a permanent unlock. I can have it so that you can key in, it locks behind you. There, there's a lot of freedom, you can see any entrance and exit. Uh, like with, with the, with the key, so like if anybody from public works goes in, you can see that on the app, on the web store. So, or on the website, so something to think about, um, they're, they're pretty widely used in like high-end, uh. Hospitality locations, I've seen them in a lot of like, uh, hotels and things, because they're very versatile. Uh, but it may not work with this, it may not, and it may not be cost reasonable, it may be that what we have now is, is the best bet, but, you know.
Does that require internet or anything?
You would have a relay.
That's our biggest issue down there is we don't have.
Yeah.
Cause that was through the roof when we checked into it.
Gotcha. I don't know either. You may, they may have cellular repeaters, but I don't know, that would be a good question. Uh, I think they know the Salto, S A L T O.
Okay.
Uh, so the, the tracking is all via wifi, but they can set it up. I don't know, I don't know enough to say definitively, uh, but some, an option.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, we kinda laughed as they threw out a basically two hundred dollars per door to go to just straight manual locks, so.
Yeah.
I was like, well, that's four hundred dollars, that covers the cable and them to come out whenever we call, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They're crazy.
Yeah.
I feel bad for all the kids that have been down there with their parents. Playing a part, unable to use the potty down there, so.
Yeah. Maybe the mayor just volunteered to.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, so and I'm like.
Yeah.
No problem.
You think my husband's crazy now?
Well, I don't think you like that too much.
Just make sure you're saying to me like you have to be silent.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah. Okay, goodness gracious, okay. Uh, we are gonna move on to action item number nine, motion eight, since we omitted one on page two fifty-nine. It's approval of resolution twenty-five slash twenty-six dash. Free adopting the public works design standard update number sixteen. Just need a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty-five slash twenty-six dash zero-three, a resolution adopting public work design standards update number sixteen.
One second.
The motion from Council, a second from Councilor Hillbrand, all those in favor?
All right.
Hi, hi, motion passes. All right, uh we're gonna move on to item number nine or ten, whichever you wanna call it. Um, approval of resolution twenty-five slash twenty-six dash oh-four, identifying a voting delegate. And one ultimate voting delegate to represent the city at the League of Oregon Cities twenty twenty-five annual business. Page two sixty-three. But with this clarification. Do I, if I'm, as I'm making this resolution, can I put in a specific name? I don't see that.
Uh, what I think already does it. Counselor, I didn't wait, because what this.
I just think I was gonna include it in the motion.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes, please, I'm going to approve resolution twenty-five slash twenty-six dash oh-four, a resolution identifying. Namely Kitty Mackin to represent the city at. The League of Oregon Cities two thousand twenty-five annual business meeting.
Wait a second.
Okay, I'm a counselor, I'm a motion from Council Peterson and the second from Council High Grove, all those in favor? All right, I, I, motion passes.
For, I mean, may I add something?
Yes, please, um.
I am going to be putting in a second application to join the board of directors, they have two opinions. We have some new things to talk about with D E I V, I mean, we can't talk about it. Um, I feel like I have very specific. Experiences that could help, so I'm gonna give it a second try, so I might be voting for myself. But maybe, um, but it is an excellent opportunity to get some of my message out there.
Thank you. We are gonna move on to uh city council comments and concerns, um and I'm gonna start with you, Council Mackin, by the way.
Oh, I had so many, okay, um. One of the things about this new loan that we will be hurting uh on picking on. For the Fisher Farms. Um. Can we establish a policy? Where we add that to utility bills? The people are gonna need to make the payment in one way or another. The way we're handling the bridge debt payment. Is by everybody paying a little bit on their utility bill every month. I would like to suggest that future debt. Um, be handled in that way, part of the reason we are in this met is all of. The debt we've taken on and all of the payments involved. It seems to me if we start paying this off a little bit of time, it'll be easier on the consumer. So. How do we go about discussing that and? Um. It seems like a logical way to go, um, and I'm not sure where to go from there. I had a whole bunch of other things too, but um I'm gonna leave it that for tonight.
Excellent.
Me, um, just a couple quick updates on events. Uh, we got the Brookside Cemetery Tour um coming up October third and fourth. I believe we've gotten it on the D C D A website, I think, just today, the city.
City share.
Yeah, that's just come with that, so that's gonna be a lot of fun, uh there's gonna be actors involved. Um, and costumes, so. Uh, anybody out there in Zoom land, uh check out the website, buy a ticket. Um, a couple of other things, uh we ended our um season for the Dayton Friday Nights last Friday. Um, with our Elvis Presley act, um it drew a really good crowd. Um, people were there until nine, nine fifteen, um they had a great time. Um, there's gonna be some, some updates. To next year's, uh they're talking about that tonight in their meeting, uh there should be some good updates to that program. Um, for the July fireworks show, um. I know with the two hundred and fifty year anniversary, that's a big deal. Uh, what we do tentatively have our games canceled in for that, that is a Saturday. And so my question to the council is. Do, should we stay with the Saturday, July fourth, because of the two hundred and fifty years? Or? Stay with the Friday nights for that whole evening event? Um, cause that was for the community, that's a, that's that this last year was a great turnout and people loved the fact that they had music. On the Dayton Friday Nights and they just transitioned right over to the fireworks. So that's something that I've been kinda thinking about, but I. Bring it to you guys, kinda think about it.
Yeah.
It was awful.
So, those are the only things I had that I wanted to bring up.
Cool.
The only thing I think about maybe having it on the fourth is we have an extra day bringing more people into the community that. Might spend their money on businesses.
Part two.
Hmm, that's a good point.
That's a good point.
And and rent hotels, my. Cause they're gonna be here for Friday night too.
There was a lady in the audience Friday night, hot pink electric wheelchair. She was visiting from Eugene.
That's cool.
Yeah, that was cool, very nice, very nice. All right, Council Hillbrand.
I got a few things, so uh first and foremost, I wanted to applaud um Scarlet Communications interview with uh Miss Wannenhead, that was a phenomenal interview. Uh, they went up on Discover Day and it had an immense amount of engagement on the the data community page, there was well over two hundred people that interacted with that. Uh, which is. Pretty significant for that page, you know, it averages somewhere between like fifteen and twenty, so that's, you know, that that's pretty, pretty big. Um, I did want to lament a little bit, uh the bridge lights is really sad. You know, um, it's really sad, I I hope that, you know, in the. In the coming months with the potential for the exclusion zones and things like that, I hope that uh. We find some ways that we can, you know, have teeth in some of these things to to prevent them from happening in the future. And hopefully, maybe, you know, next year, the year after, in the time to come, those bridge lights are really cool, and so if we can. Address this issue and, you know, be reasonably confident that the same thing won't repeat, like to see them up again, you know, at at some point in the future. And they're really cool, I think they're really pretty at night, love if I can over them, and that's just kinda sad, but, you know. It is what it is, right? Um. And. I also wanted to, on that topic. You know, I, everybody involved in putting up anything that gets damaged like that, like you guys have a, have a tie to that thing, you know, um like you're investing your time, you're investing your effort. You know, and and I think that's. It pardon my language, but that's a really friggin shitty thing too, so I I really do empathize with. You know, you guys and all the work that you put in and and that damage, whereas us, we just see it, it's like that, that's, that means more. You know, because you put in that time, because you put in that effort, and so I I really, you know, apologize that, you know, you guys are going through something like that right now, because that's just a cross town. You know, because that's really, that's real tough. Uh. So, um, I did wanna applaud the curb painting, looks really good. Uh, it's probably one of the updates, I'm sorry I was quoting that, but uh it is good, it looks really good. Um, and then, um, in one of the updates, I'm not sure if this is gonna be talked about, but uh an update on the ballards would be cool to. Chat it out for the bridge, if that's um something that can be updated on, and then, um. I wanna talk, um, while for a quick second with regard to the business loan. Um, whatever to talk about, completely hypothetical, I wanna be very clear, I'm not, you know, proposing anything one way or the other, have we, um. Have have we talked a lot yet recently and told them what we want to do, what we don't want to do, like. Have we decided some things up here, like, are they still waiting on us to make some decisions and let them know? Um, is kinda my fault, my question prior, and it's kinda followed to that, but, but where where are we at? With that conversation, um, is is kind of. My initial question, there's a follow up to that, I'm sorry.
We're still evaluating a lot of different legal language.
Cool, love that, um. Um. Nevermind. We're there, cool. That's it.
That's okay.
Um, no, I was just gonna echo, I'm impressed with the work that Dawn and his team are doing and. Was keeping things clean and painted and. And how good the Friday Nights was this year, it was really success and. Looking forward to all the little things that we're we're working on, it's really exciting. Good job, Rick, but. Oh, and I guess my final one is just, uh, Jeremy. Giving the finances of hiring a person that you're confident in and. People that you're confident in, just kinda pulling all that together, giving us a, you know, five hundred page packet and. And then feeling good about, so, um, and Dave, your research on some of these things, I just think, I think we have great staff, thank you.
Okay, um. Quick follow up to our decision to delay the applications earlier, do we need to reopen applications if we're delaying our decision? Like, I'm not sure what the policy is up. They don't, they don't, okay.
According to our code, yeah.
Nature, yeah, okay, cool, that sounds great.
All right, um, I am not gonna say anything tonight because my mouth runs enough as it is, so. Uh, we will go on to information reports, uh we'll start with uh tourism and economic development.
Okay, well, once in a while, I get to get outside the office and actually connect with the people and the businesses that they have downtown. And one of those days was last week, because. We want to get our business community involved in Halloween this year because. We're gonna transfer the activity to the library. Which will get us front and center on Ferry Street, and we'd like to see our businesses as well around the square and elsewhere. Participate in giving out candy as well to the kids, especially from that three to five park, right after they get out of school and are able to to go out and about.
Yeah.
They usually come to school in their costume, so makes sense. So I got to see everyone, I mean, I I touched base with at least a dozen different businesses with a positive response almost from everyone. Uh, which was really great to see, and it's it's. It's by doing that, then you get to hear the stories and you get to get the pulse of what's going on around here. Because, you know, I I'm I'm always concerned, because. I know that foot traffic is not a big thing around here, I looked at our new businesses and come on board and even exist in, it's always a concern, so. First, one of the things I did, I saw the Bay House and I passed on to you the coin interview. That was on TV, which to me was fantastic, um. It really shed positive light on city of Dayton, uh it drew a little love at the Joel Palmer House as well. Which are in the four star ranking, I just, I love that, right, I mean, yeah, we're the town that has the four star ranking, I mean, okay. We'll take it, um. And talked to in Dayton as well and and to hear the businesses hooking up and the bookings are coming up and they have. Several event type things going on in October, which are pushing out their weekend, this last weekend, if you caught it on community page. The Bay House sold out for the first time over the weekend.
I got there thrilled to be.
So it was, that's the kind of momentum that gets them satisfaction and it certainly bodes well for us as a city. Um, we'll be changing the billboard on Highway eighteen, uh the person, the the end of Dayton is taking it over in another few weeks. And they'll carry it on through into December. So, um, that's the plan along, because we split the cost, um, so they'll be putting it up, so we'll continue to have date presence on that billboard. Um, and then, um. Last, but certainly not least, you know, we're in the midst of, Jeremy is creating a new evaluation system for staff. In their performance measurements uh evaluation system. Um, so tomorrow I get the pleasure of meeting with Jeremy and. We're gonna be going over some of the things that I have, and one of the things that has been emphasized is that. These goals that we create align with your goals as a council, so. Anything we're looking to do or talk about or put focus on has to connect to one of your goals. And so tomorrow we'll be talking about those and subject matter will be from grants to community survey, which is a good way to get the pulse, we used to do it for community survey. Some, you know, a few years back, um, and uh talk about D C D A and Friday Nights next year and how we might be able to elevate that experience, um. So looking forward to that tomorrow, so all in all, um. Those are, those are positive things moving forward, we also are getting a free ad with Travel Oregon, the digital app and so forth, moving forward, that just came out, we jumped on it right away and. And so we'll be promoting that as well uh in this forthcoming week, we got good exposure from them this last time when they did the three days of date, so. That is my report for this evening.
Excellent, thank you, Dave. All right, Public Works, stop.
All right, um, so we got confirmation back, uh we reached out to. Our contact at Yanhill County, they reached out to the state about our disinfection byproducts. It used to be on the annual, then we got bumped to quarterly, we have been officially put back to our annual testing cycle, so we are. Good to go on that. Um. The project down at Dayton Villages. Those guys have been moving right along, they have been. Awesome to work with, they're very on top of communication with Danny and Public Works staff. Um. They did. Last week? Last week they went out and they completed all of the hot taps for the new service lines that had to be hooked up out there. They're finalizing, they did five of them, uh because they were able to reuse, I believe. Four or five that were already out there, um, so everything's been updated and new, but they had to hot tap five more for the units. So we were out there, got to witness the hot tabs, got to look at everything before anything was covered up. Awesome for us, we were able to take a picture, send it to Danny so he can put it on the maps in the future, so big, big deal for us. Um. We talked about the bathroom. The street sweeper. They came out, we had a. The broom head for the actual curbside, the motor itself blew up. So they were able to come out, replace that, um. The last parts for that showed up today, um, and it's just, um. Basically seals the vacuum to the ground, so it doesn't blow dust out the back. Uh, just a wear and tear item, those showed up today, so we're hoping that Public Works can get those put on. This week, hopefully, so it'll be ready to go for the third Wednesday sweeping this month. So I know that'll be exciting to the community, because it's been down for some time. Um. Next month, we are gonna be short a person in Public Works because Jeremy was able to find funding to send one of my guys to obtain their C D L. So I'm no longer will be the only one on staff that can drive the sweeper or the back truck, so.
Excellent.
When emergencies happen and I'm not in the area, it can still be. Handled reasonably and not. A nightmare for the crew. Um. Going along with that, uh we have two Public Works employees that are signed up. Going along with that, uh we have two public works employees that are signed up, they're just waiting. One's waiting to hear back on wastewater, one's waiting to hear back from water to get. Um the final approval so they can schedule testings for their level ones, so. Jeremy has been a big supporter of that as well, so we're trucking right along with that, we're just waiting, wait to hear back, so. Um the Third and Ferry or Third and Alder Stormline down here. Uh was supposed to start today, they actually had an issue with getting their shipment for their parts. So they're supposed to be out Thursday to start uh. Should be pretty straightforward, there there wasn't any major issues or worries on their part, so. Should be pretty, I think they're scheduled for three weeks, but that's being pretty. Conservative on it, they're hoping that they can get it knocked out a lot quicker, so. Um but yeah, as soon as, soon as they get here, we'll let Jeremy know and he can pass it along so you guys are aware, but that will be a. Pretty active site over there, right there off of the edge of the road between the white line and the sidewalk, they'll be. Digging basically from the corner of the building all the way down to Oliver Street to replace that pipe, so. Going along with that, the water leak out on Sydney Lane, uh. That line had three repairs within two feet. So we got the green light from Jeremy to go ahead and replace that service line, uh that was completed. Thursday last week. I know everybody's hoping to see it paved tomorrow, um that's actually gonna be paved when they're done with the storm line work over here. Because it's the same contractor, so it's actually to save everybody money and. Not waste a bunch of material, they're gonna pay full jobs at once, so. That is uh hopefully by the end of this month or the very beginning of next month, that'll all be done and paved. We've been working, Public Works has been working with Dave and been working with a contractor, trying to figure out the irrigation well. We had some program issues, the power outage shook everything in Public Works quite well. Uh we lost the program down at the irrigation well, Dave was able to get them to come out, put a new program in. We're still having issues, they're thinking that the well's having issues, so we've reached out to OAWU to try and get some free assistance. We're members, so they'll come out and lend a hand, look at things, diagnose, um so we're trying to figure out if we. Have a well issue that's drying up or if we just have a program issue. As we, as you can all see, the park dried up very quick this year, so. And that's kind of Jeremy and myself, like Donat said, had a meeting about the tree. We're trying to figure all this out before somebody invests money and time into putting a new tree in there to watch it die, so. That's our day.
Yes, please don't let that die, or every time I get my nails done, I'm gonna.
Like Dave said, we're out and about an awful lot, so and she flags us down.
I, yeah, you know.
I know. The end of August, we actually were able to complete through the fire station, Public Works did our biannual CPR and first aid training. So, you know, Public Works and then um Jason with Code Enforcement was able to attend, so there's. Five of us now on staff that are current with CPR and first aid.
So if I kill over, you'll be able to give me mouth to mouth, because I.
Not mouth to mouth anymore, but yes. Like I said, with the power outage, we had uh. On the report that you guys saw, there's a couple of days where well one went stagnant. So like your one twenty all wall outlets, you're supposed to have a hundred and twenty volts running through them. So out there, we have three phase power, so the outlets are still supposed to have a hundred and twenty volts, we had sixty volts. So well one for for three days, well one couldn't run because they during that power surge and all the chaos.
It just reset.
One of PGE's components out there actually fried, so. They came out, they fixed it, everything's good now, but yeah, we had three days of no production out of that well because they couldn't. They couldn't do anything.
Sorry, I was just thinking out loud, I probably shouldn't, thinking about Texas.
Best question on the power outage actually. So it it seems like there's kind of a single point of failure in that intersection, because it's gone out three times in the last. At that intersection or one pole over from the intersection, A, I wasn't sure if there was any kind of. Clause in PGE of, you know, if it happens X amount of times in X timeframe, there's any kind of operations process. I know the answer to that is definitely no, but I felt like it'd be good to at least ask. Um but also is there, you know, a a single point of failure from that transfer station that puts the entire town out of power? Three times and, you know, however many months. Plan on making it so that there's not, there's a single point of failure.
Or when I asked them what the, what they were gonna do to try and remedy this, the guy that I talked to who was. Running the show out there said. The second time it happened was a piece of equipment hit a telephone pole. And he said, I wasn't driving it, so I don't know what to tell you.
Well, that is true.
So that kind of set the tone for our conversation, so I really don't know.
I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Worth, worth, worth the question.
Yeah, and he informed me that as much as I hate dealing with the power outage, he doesn't enjoy the phone call.
That's fair.
That early in the morning and scrambling to get his crew and everybody on site either, so.
So he's like, don't ask me that.
Kind of like, it's over my head, I'm just out here fixing this, so. But, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Jerry, you have more information on PGE, you should, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, good, okay.
And then um. I happened to see it this weekend while we were out and about, somebody had put a cone in the middle of Church Street and Pot Hall. Nobody called, nobody complained, nobody said anything. Just happened to be driving around on Saturday going, why is there a cone in the middle of the road? So the pot bowl was fixed today. Like I said, say, see something, say something, but nobody.
I can't understand why it's so galling on our. To pick up the phone and say, there's a puddle on blah 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 street.
I mean, you can get online and make a complaint on the app.
We have an open house, like a major open house.
Nobody would come.
That's certain, that you can lay out the services that are available, self services.
Brand, we can talk to ourselves about.
So I saw that cone, do you want me to text you and say, you know about this cone, right?
Absolutely. I don't have a problem with that, I, like I said, if we don't.
So with the cone.
If we don't see it, nobody calls. Then that's when you start seeing that, well, that's been there for a month, well.
You could call like I did and say the water pressure is low again and then find out there's nothing wrong.
But you called and three of us showed up on a Saturday morning. Yeah, there is. You hit on the ballards, we are actually trying to figure out an alternative because you wouldn't think it, but. Those ballards are extremely expensive. Yeah, uh. I know when the first one got damaged, we reached out and got a quote for about five thousand dollars to do two ballards with collars. So they can be removed, when we were down there for our first aid, we talked to the fire department and they said. Put boulders down there, we don't need to get across the bridge, if the bridge catches on fire, we're gonna fight it from the side anyways, so. We're trying to figure out a cheaper way to obstruct that.
Well, I mean, it's not like we don't have the equipment that couldn't move it in and.
And that's what he said.
Landscape holders are a good idea. So Domain Roy just dug up like thirty or forty landscape holders off of Warren Road in Denny, uh maybe give him a call.
We've got access to a whole bunch of pre ones, we just have to figure out what they're gonna. Charge us to haul them and get them over here, because we would have to contract out a big dump truck to get them over here and get a piece of equipment to. Move them, so it's actually, somebody on staff has. Access to an unlimited amount of boulders on their property, so. That's awesome, um and then lastly is uh a sampling topic. So we are being uh. It's PFAS, it's a. I don't even know how to pronounce the full term here. But it's basically a manmade chemical that has been in use since the forties, it's primarily used in non-stick cookware. Water repellent clothing and food packaging and um. OHA and DEQ are partnering together on this project, so they are reaching out to any and all. Um water systems that are less than three thousand three hundred people, so that puts us in there um. But they're coming out, they're gonna be contacting us sometime between now and spring of twenties or. Yeah, April of twenty seven. No, sorry, uh yeah, April of twenty six. And then um if we have any traces of that that are deemed. Noticeable, I guess, they will um see what kind of, they've got funding that's available for this project. Uh so they will see what kind of funding and what kind of remedy we need, so that is something that we are waiting to hear from them. For scheduling, um the only thing that after that point is uh whether we pass or we fail. We are still required uh between our first sample and April of twenty seven. Uh we would, we would have to conduct between two and four more samples. So the first one is on them free of charge to see if it's in the system. The next two to four, depending on our levels, uh would be out of our pocket. So it would just be run through, it's just a water sample that we would run with our regular samples that we take, but it is. Another, another sample that we would have to take uh as required, so.
Since I missed the first, sorry, I'm outside the door. This is a new sample that we have to take.
So OHA and DEQ are working together on this, so they're gonna do the first sample. Free of charge, it's for all water systems that are three thousand three hundred people or less, so we fall into that. Uh but then they would do one sample between now and spring of next year. Just depends on scheduling, and then we would be required, uh depending on results, we would be required to do between two and four more samples. Before April twenty seven, so we would have to pay for two to four more samples.
And this is the stuff that's in no stick spray and that kind of thing. So they put this in our food and everything. And then they wonder why it's in our effin' water. Can we please think with our damn brain? I don't understand that, and now we're gonna have to pay money to boot to test to see if that's there. When it shouldn't be in our food and water to begin with.
And unfortunately for us, majority of our water comes out of the ground, so we've got a. Higher likeliness of it being there, because it breaks down and gets into the soils. So we're waiting to hear, we haven't heard anything yet, um we actually even reached out just to see if there was an estimated timeline. And we got email back that said that we're, they're still getting their schedule together, so.
What's the threshold, do you know, for if we have to continually test for that?
The only thing that they've released to us so far is just they're doing the first one free. And then every five to seven months, we would be required to do another test.
And who do they have contracted with to do that?
Uh the letter says that DEQ is doing now, so.
And who's DEQ hiring that's coming out to do that?
No idea.
I'm sorry, I, there's, there's something. Okay, something about that for me, sorry, there is. Somebody's got a contract someplace.
We'll know more when they reach out, but yeah, we haven't heard.
I'd be interested to find out. Alright, enough of my conspiracy.
That's all I got, we're trying to finish up the last handful of curbs that are in the downtown core and then we're gonna. Continue working our way out, but we were trying to get all of them done before school started and we had some guys out sick, so.
How often do you do those, just like you're asking?
It's pretty much yearly. Yeah, and then any of the fire hedges that looked really poorly, we were trying to paint those as well, so. Definitely showing some wear.
I saw Justin with green paint. I don't think I've ever seen green paint before, it was like at the edge of the driveway or something.
I think that's his tape that he was using to keep it off the ground.
Oh, okay, that. To do the whole dang side of the driveway. My husband does not allow me to paint anymore. Right on, okay, we're gonna move on to the city manager's report, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor, to add to what Dawn said about CDL trading, when Jake's done, I'm next in line because I am bound and determined to drive this darn streets. Uh PGE, before I forget, Dave, the mayor and I attended the annual city county dinner. In August, at that meeting, PG representatives said they're going to be coming out to all the cities. Expect that in the, in the weeks and months ahead, they said they want to reboot their relationships with the. Local government entities.
That's because they raised our prices and now they gotta kiss our butts, that's what matters.
So that'll give me a good opportunity to ask questions. Uh moving on to my report, we're still working on the integrator of record RFP, we have some legal details to work out, we have a meeting tomorrow. To talk about that, we received the one point two million dollar Fisher Farms grant. I have forms from the Oregon Water Resources Department that we're working on, I'll bring that to you in a future meeting. We're gonna have to approve it, once it goes to OWRD, they'll give us a contract, that'll come to you, you'll prove it. Uh but we have to get this other stuff that you proved earlier tonight done before we move to construction. And there is a deadline to spend that money, it was paid out of the state's general fund, so we gotta have, have that. Spent by June thirtieth twenty seven, talked to Danny, said, thinks, he says it's aggressive, but doable. Assuming everything goes to plan with the permitting and more of all of this. Um we brought on board a new finance director, Rob Walker, he joined last week. He's a CPA with extensive corporate controller experience, he is just the person that we need at this time. He is working side by side with Jamie, get trained up, her last day is next week. She's done a fantastic job, we've been lucky to have her, went and met her, but she's moved on to bigger and better things. I asked Jamie to prepare a list of things she's been working on, that's after my report. This is all like little points, this doesn't cover the hundreds of tasks that roll up to each of these things. But I just want you to be aware of what she's been working on, uh staff and I instituted. Were initiated a leadership development institute, so that's a training that we'll have quarterly. To start, I wanna touch on some key leadership concepts, we talked about performance management one oh one. At the first Leadership Development Institute, you're gonna see that in months ahead. We're building out a performance measurement system that'll tie into the goals that you have adopted in May. So we're gonna be working the end of this calendar year to build out that system and then. Law goes to plan, have measures, a full set of measures by the end of the third quarter. Now that the systems are in place for mon- timely and accurate monthly financial reporting. We have visibility into fund level cash balances. Based on that information, we're gonna need a short term cash flow tool to tide us over in our governmental funds until property taxes start coming in. One tool is a tax anticipation note, already. One tool is a tax anticipation note. Already reached out to one bank that does this. That will require your approval, so expect to see that at a future meeting. And then lastly, in August, the mayor, Don, Dave and I met with Congresswoman Salinas. Uh, it was only thirty minutes, but we covered a lot in that thirty minute timeframe. She was very gracious. Uh, very interested in what's going on in Dayton and we thought made sure that she was, keeps aware of the funding request we have through her office through the watershed lineup placement. What questions do you have for me?
Questions? I got no questions yet.
Oh, um, Jeremy mentioned that Dayton Code One Bank you can't. Um, you need to go get a counter check. I can't find your checkbook.
Oh, jeez, okay.
Yeah, US Bank.
Okay.
Um, if you have the bank statement, that would help you. You are the signer on the, okay?
I have them.
You don't have any?
I gave you all the statements last.
I have the bank statements. Yeah.
You have them?
We have the bank statements.
Okay. Uh, I would hope you have the current one. I have some of the old ones.
If you give me the current one, I can go down to US Bank and take care and do whatever it is that they're, so that we can finally take care of that.
Yeah.
We were wondering what that was.
So.
That's been a defunct, um, people.
It was a community progress team built for community mobilization. We had the long yearbook, um, pool going, but funding ran out. Um, we had funding from the Yamhill County Commission on Children and Families. But then they had to move their money elsewhere. And when the grant money goes away, a whole lot of other stuff goes away. Um, so, um, it was the five oh one C three was set up as a support group for the city of Dayton. So it is more than appropriate for the leftover money to go, come back here.
There's not that much in the bank. Little over two grand.
Yeah.
But we do need to tie that loose thing up.
Um, what are we going to do with it? That's the only question.
Pay some lawyers or some policy.
I was actually thinking, I wonder if we could use. You said advisory committee.
Maybe.
Oh, that's a thought.
Did you hear Kitty's suggestion to do with the leftover money from Code One, um, to start the, uh,
Is it budget?
Thank you.
The what about?
You said, you said advisory committee. That's something we really wanted to get going and that's something that I was hoping Kitty and Council Peterson could be starting with Institute.
We could use their help on that levy. We need kids talking about.
That would be a good start.
Yeah, um, so anyway, there, um, I'm glad this is going to get finished.
Quick question with regard to the tan. Um, are you thinking that you're going to look for, I'm assuming that's going to come before us for approval?
It, it must, yeah.
And, uh, October, you think?
I hope so.
Okay. Cause I, I'm assuming what we have will make it through until October is kind of my unspoken question, or else we would need to do a special session?
I need to do more analysis if that.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
I'm going to start saying that. I need to do more analysis. That's what I'm going to tell my, my clients. I like the way that sounds. It sounds better than let me review. It does. I like it. All right, um, I've entertained a motion to adjourn before we get into our executive session, so. All right, we will, uh, adjourn at G four B.
You guys see?